...for public comment, followed by items by consensus. Dr. McLeod, do we have any recognitions this morning?
I have one recognition. I would like to recognize Madeline Francis. Madeline has been selected as a candidate for the United States Presidential Scholars Program. Annually, this program, Scholars Program, recognizes and honors some of our nation's most distinguished graduating student, seniors. And annually, up to 161 students are chosen from among outstanding graduating seniors to become U.S. Presidential Scholars, one of the nation's highest honors for high school students. So, I wanted to congratulate her. I think that's a wonderful accomplishment.
Absolutely.
And now we have an opportunity for public comment. And no one here, public, do you want to do public comment?
Yes.
Okay, welcome. Please come join us up at the table.
Thank you for having me. Opportunity to talk to you today, I'm Kelly Grill, the head director of the Hopkins Center for the Arts, and this is Chuck Joseph, who sits on the board of the Hopkins Center for the Arts. And we wanted to just take a few minutes today to talk to you about some concerns that were raised by our recent application for the, for an on-premises liquor license at the Hopkins Center for the Arts. We did meet with Superintendent McLeod earlier this week to talk about some safety concerns, and we share her concerns and look forward to working toward a solution for them. We also, first and foremost, wanted to address the hours that were listed on the application. That seems to be a large bit of concern. And to clarify that, we will not be serving alcohol during those hours, only at events that take place during those hours. So, we just wanted to be very clear about that. We'll be speaking to the selectmen about that this week to change the wording on the application to reflect that. We also wanted to make sure that the community knew, and certainly the school knew, that we are going to abide by all the safety requirements that are required with this license, working with the police, working with the schools, and abiding by all of them to hold this license. We also, first and foremost, want to make it very clear that the Hopkins students and all of the students in surrounding communities are of the, foremost in our mind in all of the decisions that we make over at the Hopkins Center for the Arts. We've begun, just this year, as we opened our new building, several programs, including hosting the Be Free Coffee Houses after-school programs, and we want to continue to develop those relationships and offer those opportunities. And that is our focus. This is a secondary, even less than a secondary focus of what we'll be providing at the Hopkins Center for the Arts. But we think it will be a strong component in order to encourage the community to attend arts events at the Hopkins Center for the Arts, rather than possibly traveling to Boston or to Providence. And also will allow us to host private events on a very limited basis. We want to be able to host private events at the center. And we have learned from our cohorts, our people that we share a kindred spirit with at T-Can and Adic, if you're familiar with them, and have learned from them how significant a revenue generator this can be. And as an arts organization, the one thing we have certainly learned in the last couple of years is that programming alone will not sustain us. We do need to find alternative resources in order to sustain all of the things that we want to do in the community. And so, as part of our business plan, and as part of being able to be good stewards of all that we are doing, this is just a small part of it. So, we welcome any questions, any concerns. We want to be good neighbors. We want to be able to grow our organization and continue to support all the programs that we're doing. Any other?
This is the best board appearance I've ever had. This is great. You've covered them all.
Yeah, and we do apologize, we do have to leave because we have a board meeting in about a half an hour. So, we can't stay for the rest of the meeting.
Otherwise, we'd be here for the discussion.
We would stay, but please, call on us anytime. We're available for any questions or concerns that you have.
I don't know, if you're not going to be here for the presentation, if the committee has questions that you guys want to ask now. I know I have a question, but I'll, I'll let.
Yeah, if we could do that during, I mean, we don't normally do that in public comment, just for other people who are watching, but.
But I think that would be, I would really appreciate the opportunity, if that's okay. But I don't have to go first.
The question I have, so you talk about how this isn't a liquor license for those hours, but more for events. So, how, or why is this, why is what you're seeking different than, I presume, what you sought when you'd had your, like, the opening night? So, that's like an event liquor license. So, why are we doing it, why we, why are you doing it this way, as opposed to that way, per event?
It's a fair question. What we tried to do in the hours was to bracket the times that an event could occur, so that we had the ability to serve alcohol during those periods, but only for the two- or three-hour period of an event. And if we, if you think about it, if we have to go every time there's an event up there for one day liquor license, we've learned from T-Can, they did that for like five years, and they said it was crazy. Because it's just, it's needless. If we have the permission to do this, and we're working under a single license, then we can just do our planning accordingly. It's no difference, really. I mean, you could, you could go for just one after another day license, but I'm not sure what you gain by doing that.
So, I guess, I mean, and I don't know if it's really about the liquor license, and more just about the use of the space, and whether or not there are events happening at the school. How are those going to be planned? And maybe this really rolls into like a parking lot discussion, which I think is sort of what a lot of this brought up for me, is the parking lot issue. And so, if there are school events happening in, on an evening where someone wants to have a private, I don't even know, engagement dinner, who knows, right? They want to do something like that. How is, and if, is the school going to be considered? Are events at the school going to be considered? How are you guys planning or allowing for events like that where presumably liquor will be served?
This came up with our discussion with Superintendent McLeod. The cross-parking agreement that we have with the schools, the schools have priority. We have to clear our calendar with them. So, there'll be a single point of contact here. You know, do you have Parents' Night that night? Then we can't do anything on Parents' Night, you know? But if, but we're going to clear theatrical performance and musical performance, and say, these are the dates we have, are you okay with it? Basically, you guys run the show, and we kind of follow.
Which is what we've been doing already. We have, because you're wonderful about sending it a year ahead. We know exactly when all of your events are, and we plan ours around them.
I have a question about hours also. What about when there are things happening in your building, like painting classes or?
Acting classes, because there's some Saturday time, when I'm guessing you have. So, anytime that there would be people, kids, in your building, when these events are going on.
Right, well, the, these events are going to be happening in, the building's almost, I don't know if you've been there, it's almost like two separate areas. So, there's one area that's the Performance Center, where the main events would be happening. And there's a, the bar, we call it, is the school where all the classes are happening. They really are separate. And that's what I meant by following the safety guidelines that the A-B-V-C spells out, and what you need as far as tip-certified bartenders and security and staff. And we will abide by all of those safety regulations, regardless of time of day that it's happening.
I think one of the regulations that you shared with me was about locking away, everything's locked down.
That's required.
It's in a secure place. It's not, it's never out in the open.
Building on the, again, risking making this more conversation about the parking agreement than the actual application, but, but the hours also made me realize that, and I understand the calendar sharing, but one thing I noted about the hours on it was that they start at 5:00. And the, it's not necessarily event-based that we're going to have that problem with the schools, because at 5:00, the parking lots are still actively in use. So, was there consideration given to those hours in that? I can't imagine a situation where 5:00 is a good time to have people coming over for that event.
Exactly, and that's exactly.
But on the application, it starts then, that was what gave me pause.
Right, right. And that's what, we understand the confusion. That simply was, those are standard hours that are listed as available.
Okay.
To do that.
Okay.
The likelihood of that ever happening, I couldn't imagine.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
So, it's helpful to have you here, thank you, because I think, I think we're all trying to be careful.
About what is in our purview, just because we're a butters, essentially, versus not really understanding the protocol and requirements of liquor licensing, and understanding that that's not really our job, but, you know, but, so, because our students are involved, you know, just wanting to make sure that we've asked all the right questions and been thoughtful about it. And so, most of the questions that I have centered around the hours, and it sounds like that clarification is that those are basically event hours, but not necessarily, but then individual to each event is the decision about whether you will or will not be serving alcohol. And so, I guess, I think somebody started to ask this question too. Would, would there be a situation where you would have an event happening in the hayloft area and classes going on downstairs at the same time?
That's, it's possible, I would say unlikely. Because, just of the nature of the events that would be serving alcohol, there could be, you know, several events happening during those times, but not during the day. And not, and, you know, often, any event that's, any class is going to end by 7:00, 8:00 o'clock, but not on Friday, Saturday, afternoon. These are happening on Friday, Saturday evenings. There's no classes happening during that.
No, I was more thinking like, somebody runs it for a bridal shower on a Saturday afternoon, and you also have ballet, or whatever you have, of the many, many things that you have. And so, I think it's helpful too, to understand, at least for me. So, basically, you're holding the license, and then anyone wanting to serve alcohol, you have guidelines that are posed on you about how they go through that process, and they have to have the tip-certified whatever person, and all of that is really regulated, and not our job to regulate that regard, okay? I, I think it's just important, I mean, I know, I know both of you, obviously, personally, and you guys, I know, really put the interests of our kids, you've developed a great relationship with the schools, and I know that you have the interest of their kids at heart, but you have to take a step back and just make sure, absent personalities, does this fit? You know, because we're such a close a-butter, does this fit what we're comfortable with from a school's perspective? So, you know, I know you've probably getting a lot of questions in the community as well, but I think those were my main considerations, just keeping the events separate from the kids, and then also about locking up the alcohol. So, it will be stored on premises, but it will be locked.
Exactly, exactly. Okay. And, and really, to be clear, our goal and mission is as an art center. And so, the lion's share of what we're going to be offering at the art center are arts-related events, not, and classes, and not private events. This is just a very small portion of what we do.
So, I just have two more questions. One is with respect to outdoor, is any alcohol going to be permitted outside?
That's a good question. We are looking into the parameters of what that means. For example, if there is a wedding on a Friday or Saturday evening, we have to be aware that it's in the middle of the summer if people wander outside. We may need to have that listed, as that outdoor area within our liquor license, and that would be the reason behind it. There, there won't be a situation, you know, again, during school hours or during school events where there's going to be an event serving liquor outside. But yes, that will be included for those reasons. Because, I don't know, again, I don't know if you've been over to the, to the center before, but the Performing Arts Center has a beautiful farmer's porch in the front, and a patio area in the back that was intended to actually be used as a stage to play music. So, it is quite possible that weddings could happen on that area. And so, it will be limited to that property in that area.
So, I mean, I'll just say out loud that that causes me some, some concern, because even, so you're sitting here, and you're, you're the director, and checks on the board, but stuff like that will change. And once the license, or the permit is granted, who knows how the next director is going to feel?
Sure.
So, it causes me concern for that reason. And then, also, I mean, I think that, just going to, I think, I'll use Quattro as an example, and they originally had the outdoor seating, and you couldn't, they had to stand there at the door, and so you can't take alcohol outside. I mean, go ahead and go outside and be refreshed or whatever, but you can't take alcohol out there.
If I could speak to that, because I don't think we've determined yet whether the patio can be used, because the rules and regulations do require it to be enclosed, if you're serving alcohol. So, I'm not sure that's even going to be applicable to the art center. We may not be able to use that.
Okay, and that's something that's decided by who?
That's, those are the A-B-Cs.
Okay. And then, the other question, this is just maybe more general, because you're here, and we have a request, I think, for a letter. Is, what, what are you looking for from us, and what do you see our role here?
We, we see ourselves in collaboration with the schools. I mean, we haven't even, this is our first year of operation, so we're not even, we're just trying to start to crawl right now, you know? But in two or three years, we're going to be running. And hopefully, we're going to be running in a really coordinated, unified way with the schools from the arts perspective, and integrating with their curriculum, and supplementing what may not be able to happen during the school day here. We think, we think that's some real exciting possibilities in there. So, what we're looking for is that you understand that this is an ancillary part of our plan. It's part of our business plan as our X number of weddings or private offices, because art centers fail. And they fail financially, because they can't support themselves with classes. So, we would appreciate a letter that supports the mission of the HCA, understands that this is a small piece of the puzzle, but recognizing that we're taking all the necessary safety precautions to make sure that there's no difficulty with the students, and we're coordinating with your timeframes and not overlapping.
So, our letter would look something like, you know, we've had, whatever, we've talked to the HCA about our concerns, this is, we agree that their mission is to support the arts in collaboration with the schools, you know, presently based on?
Not detrimental to the educational objectives of the school.
Okay.
That's it in a nutshell.
Okay.
And we appreciate that. We genuinely appreciate that. And, you know, all kidding aside, that this coordination is one of the real exciting possibilities of having that facility in proximity to these three schools that are here.
Can I ask one more question?
How often, so when, assuming you got the liquor license, is it good for a certain period of time?
I don't know.
Or this is like a lifetime?
I don't know.
That's a good question, yeah. I'm sure there is a term on it.
I mean, I'm sure if there's a violation, then certain other things kick into place.
That's right.
But I'm just wondering, you know, to the point about, particularly about the outside patio question. You know, if it's reviewed in three years, it may well be that you have enclosed that space in that period of time, and that would be something that you would be changing, and I'm sure we would get another letter.
That's right.
But I just didn't know if you knew off the top of your head what that, that's a, no.
And Ralph, Mr. Dumas has a question.
If I could, I have some experience with running function halls in other communities. And question I have is, will the town require you to have a police detail when you hold functions?
We're, we're meeting with the police on that this week. Much like you have functions here, if you have a large turnout at an athletic event, you don't always have to have one. Sometimes it's anticipatory, if you think it's going to be a big event. If we have a theatrical performance or a music performance over there, we're probably in the 250 range, you know? We've got 45 parking spaces on our site. So, we've got to find out what the police wants. If the police tell us, you know, if you think you're going to hit 300, we want a detail, then that's what we do.
I was actually thinking about a police detail inside the building, for example, if you have a wedding of 250 or 300 people. One of the roles of a police detail at a function is to keep an eye on alcohol consumption.
I don't know that answer, Ralph. I don't know.
But your tips-certified?
Exactly. That's the requirement of, exactly.
That's correct.
And that, and it's all spelled out in the requirements of the licensee. And there's a certain ratio, you know, for, for tip-certified bartenders and waitstaff per patrons.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all so much.
Okay, is there anyone else here for a public comment? Okay, and then? Yep, this, this is the time, if there's anyone here to talk about the school lunch program, this is your opportunity to speak to the school lunch program. I don't know if that's why you guys are here, if you just want to hear it. If you want to speak to the school lunch program, this would be your opportunity. No? Okay. So, we'll go to school committee reports, reports to the school committee. There's no one here from student council. Liaison reports.
I'll just briefly say the, and we'll have another meeting before this, but Chris Heron is coming to speak to, oh, all right.
Go ahead, you do it. No, you do it.
No, you got the flyer, so you'll remember all the details. But I just, on behalf of the coalition, I wanted to point that out, and also just let you know that the charter review committee is meeting regularly, and we're slowly plotting our way through the current charter and recommendations that were given to us sort of at the beginning of the meeting, I mean, of the process. And then, we'll get to the point of scheduling public hearings. And there also will be, we will be reaching out to all the committees in town, so you'll be getting contacted from someone on that committee to weigh in.
Okay, any other liaison reports? And? If you guys don't have anything to report, we're.
There was discussion about?
That's right, the basement meeting. Yeah, we just had continued discussion, we're continuing with the design, I forgot that was after the last meeting. So, yes, we did meet, we're continuing with the design development. We're continuing to look at the interior spaces in the building, and just sort of supplement the tremendous amount of work that's being done by the working groups, which are really the, the people who are going to be using the building. So, continued progress. We did hire the, a construction manager, and their name is completely escaping.
Collantonio Construction from Holliston.
Collantonio Construction from Holliston. So, we hired a construction manager, they attended our last meeting, you know, and seemed, I think the biggest question that was posed to them was the timeline and the budget. Does it look realistic? And they felt very, very comfortable with both the timeline and the budget that was proposed. So, we continue on track for that fall of 2018.
So, Ms.?
I could say this, last week, I drove past there late in the day, and there were five or six vehicles there. And there were a bunch of guys who were getting ready to take a walk in. So, that was pretty exciting. Yeah, that's who they were. So, you know, that's an exciting, you know, sign, I think, that, you know, maybe sooner rather than later, things are going to start.
They're still targeting early site packages in the summer, so.
I think it was last Friday, I drove by, and there was an EverSource car.
Yeah, that's right.
So, in response to the ESBC meeting, I know that there was some, there was some discussion about the finishes, and the interior finishes. And Mr. Mosher had contacted me following the meeting to ask if there could be further discussion about opportunities to really personalize and, and make this space really exciting. So, we did have a follow-up meeting this week, and the woman who's, we've been working with, came back. And we, we started to really brainstorm a theme. It All Starts Here. And we were excited about the, the thought of It All Starts Here, because this is also the beginning of school, and we could have a start line as they enter off the buses. So, we started to really have some exciting discussion around, and they shared with us, the architect shared with us, some other buildings that they've done where there was local artists that were involved in creating these wonderful murals. So, we are going to follow up with further discussion. If there are any local artists out there who would like to volunteer their time to the committee, we would love to have your input. And, and it's, it's exciting to think about some of the possibilities, obviously, within the budget that we could, that we could do to make this just, just really specific to our community.
I think the finishes discussion was interesting for me too, because as you said, within the budget, they've, they show a lot of things that can be done that make it look not like a typical elementary school that we're used to in terms of floor designs, and characteristics, and textures that you can give to walls. And you start to get really, really excited, which is great.
Yeah.
But I, we, we saw at the ESBC meeting, the last ESBC meeting, there's a point when it goes too far.
Yeah.
Right? This is a building that has to last us for a really long time.
That's right.
So, I love those thematic ideas.
Yeah.
But there were some things thrown around about making things really, really bright, and primary colors, and.
Oh, no.
That's going to look really good on the first day. So.
We actually want the opposite of primary colors, because we want the children's artwork to stand out against the, so there's been a lot of this kind of conversation. But, but it's, it's very exciting times. And, yeah, just really basic, like, we've been talking about having shapes in the, in the preschool room as, as markers, instead of just squares. And then, letters in kindergarten, and numbers in first grade, you know? In the, just using them in all different kinds of fonts, and so, very, very, thank you to E, to the ESBC for their feedback to the, to the design group.
Oh, next is the school committee report. You'll see on the agenda that we are, do we, did we put it, we didn't put it in the, the lease agreement with the BAA and the 26.2 Foundation? It wasn't in the packet?
It, it is.
It is in the packet? Okay.
Yeah.
So, no, I knew it was on the agenda, I just didn't, I don't remember. Yep, I do remember seeing it. So, we had a meeting with the folks from the BAA and the 26.2 Foundation, and we reached agreement, basically extending what already, what the agreement has been in the past with respect to funding and parking lot use and other facilities use. The only, I think, change was, there were two changes that are of substance. One is the renewal provision, which we ended up saying, you know, to the, if it's not renegotiated, it will automatically renew for that next year. And then, the other change was to, they wanted to be able to meet with Dr. McLeod. They wanted a certain, where's the dates?
We ended up saying that we were not going to be specific on dates, that we would have a conversation once, you mean, the new building?
Minimum access, at least five days prior to the date of the event.
So, the date?
So, that's the change.
That's correct.
They didn't, we didn't put a specific date in here, but at least five days prior to the marathon, they will have some access. So, they were saying, like, normally they come in on Friday, but let's say the weather's going to be bad, maybe they want to come in on Wednesday. So, we added that without specificity to the contract.
Without specificity, and then I have since followed up with the organizers to talk about. We, as we had our discussion, we agreed to Wednesday night, they could come and do the markings on the field, because that wouldn't require any equipment. And then, they could begin after 3:00 PM on Thursday to set up. And that we would restrict our fields on Friday, so that we would not have any students out using the fields in any capacity for sports, for PE, for the Friday, so that they could have that day. And that gave them some flexibility around weather, as well as final inspections. So, it was a good meeting.
And then, the only other thing to report is on communications. We had, I think it went to the entire committee, the, I don't know, thanks for the Business Professionals of America group at the high school. We've also received some communications with respect to sexual education. One was a policy question with respect to, well, I'm not sure if it was policy, but related to the modified curriculum available for special learners, which.
We're going to take that.
Dr. McLeod will address. And the other was more specific to Hopkins, and the title in the books that were being used there. And so, that was being addressed directly by Mr. Kernan. And then, the other communication that we've received is with respect to minutes. And Dr. McLeod and I and John have followed up, and will be responding to the request for particular minutes. So, next, we have the superintendent's report.
I have a few, few great things. First is, just talk very briefly about, I'm understanding today that first-ever two-hour delay that was, that we had this morning, over the Elmwood power outage. I was notified at 6:00 this morning. And of course, we haven't had this for only a couple of our schools, so we didn't have a robocall. And I've had people come to me and say, you always sound so cheery at 6:00, 4:00, 5:00 o'clock in the morning. And I'm like, yeah, those are taped in the summer. This one was not. So, it was a bit more challenging, because we didn't have it pre-taped, and we also, Linda Henderson and Al Rogers had to help me out remotely. They weren't, they didn't have access. So, we, we believe that some of the glitches on communication with some people that didn't get the call was because of that. We tried in multiple ways to contact people. We made sure that we contacted, for example, the YMCA, who would have previously had daycare there. There was supposed to be a PD day taking place, so we had to call the provider around that. And, but it was, everybody worked together. We made sure that there was somebody at the door. There were, I would say, three or four families who showed up with children at the Elmwood School, and two at the Center School. But we did try, you know, again, multiple ways. So, I just want to thank everybody for helping to, to be as efficient as we could in a very unexpected weather incident. And we, we did, we were successful. We had decided, determined that we could stick with the two-hour delay, knowing that we had been informed that we were going to be getting power back. We got power back before, within the two-hour window, and we were all over there celebrating. And I would say, the kids had been in for maybe an hour when there was, again, another small outage, when some kids were exiting to go out to recess, and some children were on a stairway. So, again, we will debrief next week. We always learn from these events. One thing that we learned was that there was some, some lights that were missing on that staircase, and, and also that we need to make sure that we have flashlights that have working batteries. And we always learn, we always debrief, and we always improve, so.
Chuckling at the flashlights, because it's like being in your house when the power goes out, and you realize that none of your flashlights have batteries.
Working, right, right. Oh, yeah, they all have batteries, but they're dead. I had a wonderful, wonderful visit at the Hopkins Curriculum Expo on Tuesday night. I know that, Ellen, I saw you there.
I had a wonderful, wonderful visit at the Hopkins Curriculum Expo on Tuesday night. I know that, Ellen, I saw you there. They always try to do something different, but the-
Spoil it for those of us who haven't gone to ours yet.
I will not spoil it. It's not that secret. But just the way that they interacted and gave opportunities for students and, and parents to explore together with the child leading the way. It was, it was really wonderful. Just really, a lot of very enthusiastic, focused, you know, every classroom that I walked into, people, you know, were just so involved doing things with their students and in a way that teachers have prepped kids to be able to be the person that was leading their parent through. So just, just really lovely. And, and thank you to the teachers for providing such a wonderful opportunity for parents. And of course, to the administrators who are there for all three of those nights. Chris Heron will be here March the 17th, 7 o'clock till 8:30 at the Hopkinton Middle School Auditorium. He, his presentation is Rebound, The Chris Heron Story, who, who really tells a, has a story about alcohol and, and drug addiction. And apparently it is a very compelling and strong message. He will be visiting student, not visiting, doing a presentation in the middle school during the day. And then there's an evening performance. We have reached out to surrounding communities, Ashland and Holliston, to also invite parents from those communities to be part of the presentation. And then I, I heard that Holliston had, had him there recently.
Yeah, but it was standing room only, so I'm sure there'll be overflow.
So they, we have, we reached inviting people.
Yeah.
That's why we moved to the middle school.
That's why they did it in the middle.
We have capacity for 750 there, Mr. Dumas?
I don't know.
Okay. I also wanted to announce that I am going to be, thank you, H. Cam, I am going to be hosting my own show.
Ooh.
And I won't pretend that I made up the ni- the name because I didn't, but Highlights From the Hill is something that we've been talking about for a while. And it's going to air monthly beginning on March the 22nd, 1 o'clock. And I will be able to have special guests attending. I'm very excited. I feel like this kind of replaces the, what we had last year with the recognitions prior to school committee, but in a way that I can keep people abreast of exciting things and, and also, you know, give reports on things that are happening. But I've never had my own television show, so I'm very excited about it. And thank you for the opportunity. I think it'll, it'll be a great way for me to be, also be able to bring a variety of, of, you know, highlight people that, all the great people that work in this community, so. And then finally, I want to highlight something else that you know is near and dear to my heart. We will be having another All-Star Reading Series for parents beginning March the 16th. And thank you to the, the HPTA for always for helping me to organize this and offer babysitting. It's a three-part series. You can come to one or all of them, bring your kids. We'll have babysitting. And, and Carver has, has agreed to, to join Lauren DeBeau and myself in, in the presentation this year. So we are looking forward to that and are thankful for being invited to do it again. Apparently the parents at the, at the forum that we had, the State of the Schools, they were the ones that brought it up and said, hey, it would be great if you would do that again. So we will be doing it. And that's it.
Question on the Chris Heron. What age appro- it's going to be in the middle school during the day? Is that the age that's appropriate?
I think so. I think so. He definitely has a website, so you could go on there and look.
Okay, next we have the Witten's Annual Financial Projection Report. So I'd like to invite Mr. Welch and Armenti.
Just for background, for the committee. We're currently in year one of a set of three one-year contracts with Witten's. This is the second contract we've had with them. So overall, this is Witten's fourth year with us. Mr. Armenti is the district manager who's assigned to Hopkinton. And Kevin Welch is our food service director. He's a Witten's employee assigned to Hopkinton as well. Guys?
Thank you for having us again this evening and giving us the opportunity to give you a mid-year report. We understand the unique needs of the district. As Ralph says, we've been here for four years and we're committed to customize our nutrition services to meet your needs. I'd like to begin with some operational updates. Beginning of the year, we've provided training to the team members, which included safety in the workplace, allergen awareness, offer versus serve procedures. We've brought our chef in, executive chef, to enhance some presentation skills of the team. Also, the Mass Department of Elementary and Secondary Education is required to conduct an administrative review of each district's nutrition program every three years to determine if they meet state and federal requirements. This year Hopkins, Hopkington was due and the review was in January. And after the review, we have an exit interview. And the exit interview was very, very positive. The reviewer said we did an excellent job, the team, and we didn't have any deficient findings at all throughout the district. Regarding our marketing and promotion programs, we updated this year the posters in all the schools, all the nutrition posters. We've also updated the Nutrition Safari character signage in the schools, in the elementary schools. Each of our characters represents a different food group. Each offer their own unique message. They also help promote and communicate to the children our produce of the month and activity of the month promotions to encourage healthy eating habits and to become more active. At the secondary schools, our quarterly spice promotion is Little Italy and that's working nicely. The kids are enjoying some Italian favorites with a healthy twist. Also, we've updated the Smart Choice nutritional material that we provide to the students. We, again, did the International Week at the high school, which was a success, incorporating different menu ideas. And the biggest hit was Sushi Day. We had the chef come in. That's always a hit. Regarding our ongoing nutrition education programs, we've got character visits scheduled. A character comes into the school in full costume along with a ranger to speak to children about nutrition. We have some guest chef visits scheduled as well. We also have new lesson plans and educational material available as well. We continue to maintain the custom Hopkinton Nutrition Department webpage. Features, monthly menus, general program information, nutritional activity sheets, educational links. Our menus include links to nutri- all the nutritional and allergen information that parents can click on directly for each menu item. This allows parents to review nutritional information every time for every item we offer. A new menu app is available on the website for breakdown of daily menu items that we offer. Also some Witten's nutritional incentives. Providing, providing healthy food and ingredients to our customers is Witten's first priority. Witten's was the first food service contractor to eliminate high-Fruitos corn syrup, trans fats, artificial flavors and colorings, and MSG from all products that we cook from scratch. Witten's is working towards being one of the first contractors that will offer organic and/or non-GMO food products as an option in the near future. This is very difficult undertaking considering organic and non-GMO products are typically much higher in cost. Considering this cost and the demand from local communities, it's now up to the manufacturer to deliver the product that is more cost-effective for school food service. Having said that, Witten's is working closely with the manufacturers to get the cost of organic and non-GMO-free products down in order for us to provide this to our customers. As we make strides on this, we will incorporate these items within the purchasing structure for all of our schools. There is also a learning curve with staff as making organic and non-GMO meals from scratch requires culinary expertise onsite and/or additional labor. This is something we'll need to review during the budget process. We recently met with a community group that were inquiring about the possibility of an organic GMO-free program. We were asked to research what some of the costs of offering organic options would be. It's very difficult to estimate the overall increase in cost switching fully organic program. Our purchasing department estimates about 40% more in cost. Many of the foods would need to be made from scratch because presently there are not a lot of convenience-based products that are organic to choose from. The additional labor cost to produce these items would also be, have to be added to the cost of the meal. Recently, we were, we, we did some research to look and see if there was any other programs in the country that were doing this. And there was a district in California that serves all organic meals and the price was $6.50 and the premium meal was $7. One other district, and that was in California, the other district was in Miami and they had, they had a organic meals brought in. Basically, it was, they, we pre-order them and they would bring the meals in and those were at $7 a meal. So, and both of those were in 12-month growing seasons, we were told as well.
Yeah.
However, some of the items that Witten's is presently working on to source for the 2016-17 year, that would be organic or GMO-free, would be spices, salad dressings, condiments, oils and shortening, and maybe breakfast bars. In addition, right now, our granola and bulk portion yogurt are already organic. That's a Stony Field product. We were also asked by the group about the cost of providing organic salad greens for the, the high school and salad bar and then in the elementary, a pre-made salad. Again, our purchasing department estimated a 40% increase in the organic lettuce at this point. We're also asked about the availability of grant money to supplement the cost of offering organic meals. We're unable to find any grant opportunities for promoting organic or GMO-free food. The Farm to School did provide grants. Some of the grants we saw that, Amherst, Quincy, Somerville. But those were all based on increasing consumption of local fruits and vegetables. There was nothing that was based on subsidizing organic or GMO-free foods. But we would be happy to help with the district if anyone would like to write a grant. At this point, we, the deadline was November for money for next year. So you would be looking at writing a grant to the Farm to School for the beginning of next year for the following 18-year. We were also asked about foods other than bread and milk that are locally sourced and high-Fruitos corn syrup-free. Those foods, or the foods we make in the cafeteria and the ingredients we use are high-Fruitos corn syrup-free. Locally, we do use local products. We use a vendor. Anything that we order goes, is, is directly from this vendor is, comes to local. Some of the local farms in the areas, Ward's in Sharon, Lenny Orchards in Lunenburg, Brixton Family Lookout is in South Natick. So the vendor we use will automatically ship us local produce when we order it. We're also asked about what current meals we provide from scratch. We were, what we came up with was pasta and meat sauce, really all the pastas. There's a pasta Primavera, pasta Alfredo, chicken nachos. They've had beef nachos and tacos, macaroni and cheese. We've had baked chicken. They've had turkey and gravy, all the daily salads, Caesar salad, garden salad. We also have harvest bars in all the schools, which include all the, the weekly veggie subgroups that are required for the students to choose as much as they want. We have the deli Boar's Head cold cuts at the high school. I think we had shepherd's pie as well. So looking forward, some of the things we'd like to do is looking at adding a new concept next month called Veggie Power, which would promote and feature delicious vegetarian options. Ongoing culinary training, conduct a survey to, with the students to assist us improving services. I think that's already started.
Yeah, the high school.
Going to PTO meetings to present program enhancements and, and get ideas and feedback from parents. Also to send out a parent communication to keep parents informed of the program. We're also going to be involved in the Wellness Fair that's coming up. Witten's has a new product line under development called Tuscan Toast. These meals will be combined with artisan breads with fresh roasted vegetables and sorted cheese. And Hopkinton would maybe a test site for our chefs to come and try sampling with students to see how, how they like it, enjoy it. And another station we're looking at adding at the high school would be a station called Wraps to Go, where we would do individual wraps, maybe three or four different kinds. And, and the students can come up and choose to with their, and, and make a meal, but have different wraps. The financial update, the average dealer participation year over year for the first quarter remains at 35%. It was at 35% also at the same time period last year. We have a surplus through January. However, we're going to need to upgrade the point of sale. The software is outdated and no longer supported by the system provider. And most of the hardware won't support the upgrade. So that's something that we're going to have to invest in and change and upgrade.
When Joe mentions week, it's a partnership that they've made a commitment to-
Invest in, in our program. And we're going to have to shuffle some money around in that investment. And it may require an investment on our behalf as well.
For the software?
For the hardware.
For the hardware.
Yeah.
Software, you need to update the software because they don't support it any longer, the Horizon, the company.
Uh-oh.
But what happens is if you put new software, the hardware is so old it won't-
Got it. Yep.
The version of Horizon that we have has been basically outdated for a few years. They now have a, a web-based product. I'm not sure what the price increase would be, but we'll bring that to you. Unfortunately, the hardware that we have won't support in every case this new software update, so.
So we're, we're on budget and we're projecting to meet our budget goals at the end of the year. And we also discussed the lunch equity requirement for 216, 217 is, year is 278. And currently the price is at the schools of the elementary is 250 and the secondary is 275.
So for the last couple of years, for, I think it was probably three or four years ago, we talked about price equity. And for the newer members, what that's all about is the federal government now requires there to be a minimum price that we charge for a paid lunch on the average. there to be a minimum price that we charge for a paid lunch on the average because they want to make sure that the amount of money that they give us as a subsidy towards a free lunch does not exceed the selling price of our paid lunch because otherwise the free lunch money is subsidizing the paid lunch. And so, we're very likely going to have to increase our prices by a quarter for next year.
I have a question along that line, May. So, Joe, you mentioned a premium lunch. My understanding is, for example, that means a larger portion or an additional piece of pizza. Is that what premium means in our case?
No, a premium, a premium would be like the Boar's Head Deli. I think there's a couple.
More expensive product.
Yeah, more expensive. It gives us the opportunity, like the sushi days, it gives us the opportunity to provide a meal.
So, I hear your explanation, Ralph, but I've always wondered since the days of being a principal and seeing bins full of fresh food being thrown away.
Yeah.
Why we can't have a partial lunch? So, you know, we know that kids have to take the full lunch. They can't say, "I don't want the fruit." They can't say, "I don't want the fruit cup." They have to take the full lunch and then they don't want the fruit cup to begin with, so it goes in the garbage.
I can answer that.
We just had the review. I know Ralph can answer that.
It could be a huge, I mean, I just don't like to see food wasted, especially when we're talking about price increases.
The people who pay, a great portion of the price of a meal that we serve is the federal government. It's the National School Lunch Program. The National School Lunch Program defines a reimbursable lunch. As one that includes the required components.
Right.
Which include protein and vegetables and grain.
And fruit, vegetables.
Has to be so much involved in that. If a student doesn't take the components that make up a reimbursable lunch, we get no reimbursement.
Right, so that everybody's wasting money, right? I mean, so, I mean, I'm just saying, as of really basically, I'm feeling like, yeah, so that they have to spend the money in order to reimburse the lunch of which a portion of it is being thrown away because in order for us to meet the requirements, we have to take the food. And I also know that we can't do anything with the food. So, even if we were able to donate, you know, you can't even, you know, you just, yeah. So, I just, I know that's the explanation. I wondered in your world if it's ever something that you grapple with, with government?
It's something that the School Lunch Association has brought to the government about, the old days was.
Every district grapples with it.
Yeah.
The old days, it was, there was five components and if they took three, that was fine. And when they changed the law recently, it went where they have to take a fruit or a vegetable.
Right.
And that's where.
And that's where we know that whether they take it or not doesn't mean they're going to eat it.
Yeah, so it's in our best interests and we do this.
I know.
We encourage them to take.
Of course, we require them, actually.
We have a harvest box. We have different vegetables for them to try to encourage them to eat.
I know. Yeah, I just wondered if there was a logical reason, but clearly.
Yeah, we try to have a variety of different fruits and vegetables every day.
It's not logical. Okay, thank you.
It's all financially present.
Thank you.
Do we have the ability to compost? I mean, to your point, Kathy, if food is being wasted, is there an ability to separate that out and do some kind of composting?
You could, but that would be, that would be the district with maintenance and to coordinate that with them.
So, that would be on us.
Yeah, because I think sometimes districts with the animals and, you know, really would have to, we'll work with you however, but it wouldn't be something that we would have to work with your maintenance.
Wouldn't be an easy thing to do.
Right.
Something to take on.
Right.
I think the challenge there has always been also with the turnover, the lunch turnovers happen so quickly that we barely have time to clean the tables. I mean, we do clean the tables thoroughly, but there really isn't a lot of time for any additional. We've also talked about the conversation about, especially as we were talking about the new building, you know, what about when you came, Kevin, having a, like a dishwasher service and recyclable plates? And really, when they cost it out, it's, you have to look at the, you know, breakage and maintenance and then having somebody hired to manage the dish room and all of these things, it is not a savings.
The cost of chemicals, the cost of operating the machine.
Yep.
Yeah, there's more to it.
Yep.
Well, that was sort of related to my next question, which is every couple of years we get some enthusiastic students usually that come in and give us a proposal about using more recyclable trays and silverware and I don't know if that's, it's always been too complicated because of separating it out and I guess I'm just curious if there's any forward movement on that front.
The paper tray, some districts go with a paper tray, but it's double the cost of what we're using. So, that would be, if you're willing to absorb that cost, it's about double and it's a, it almost looks like a cardboard tray.
And then just my final question, talking about, you know, organic and locally sourced foods, I don't know if you have established a connection with Water Fresh Farm right down the street or if that's something that you're able to do or would be cost-effective for you to do, but certainly the transportation would be minimal.
Yeah, we talked to our purchasing folks about that and looking at a local day and seeing if they can't make that connection with us, with them. So, that is definitely a possibility because they were, they come to the Wellness Sphere and that's, we've discussed that with them a couple of times at the Wellness Sphere, so that's, could possibly be an opportunity.
Excellent, thank you.
Sure.
So, I have a couple of questions, but one thing I do just want to note from your, first of all, thank you for the thorough nature of your presentation and it's funny you said this is their fourth year because this is my fourth year on the committee and I remember the hiring vote. I just want to thank you for your partnership with the district. In particular, when you talk about engaging in, with the community and striving to meet the needs and requests of the community. I appreciate you updating us. I heard personally some really positive feedback of the meeting that occurred with the group of people in town who were very interested in hearing more about the nutrition within the school lunch program, opportunities for organic and non-GMO items. It's certainly something that interests me. I understand the push-pull of the, how it's challenging to deliver right now, but it's really, I find it positive that you, that you're actively looking into it and even looking into options for the upcoming year. So, it makes, as those who have to authorize this contract every year, it's not just about providing, you know, it's not just about a service provider who's going to bring lunches and breakfast in for our students, but we really are looking for that partnership. So, you continue to really show that partnership, so we appreciate it. I just wanted to highlight that. My questions, so the point-of-sale, I'm going to go over here first. So, the point-of-sale system, Ralph, I'm assuming we don't have in the budget for next year right now.
No, but as I said, there is some investment money.
Right.
Which has been promised to us by Witsen's, which we've not tapped into. And that's part of the contract and so, we can reshuffle the plans to help procure this.
Okay, so, okay, that makes sense. And then from the standpoint of the urgency of it, I know you say it's not supported, but from a software perspective, that means different things. So, do we absolutely need to replace it for next year or is it, if it crashes, we have no backup, basically? Which may be one in the same, but it can, there can be a difference. Like, does the software not going to work anymore or are we just looking at, they've moved on to a new version that they're not actively supporting anymore?
They've moved up to two, they've moved up to two versions ahead of us and they don't support, as of this year, they don't support the version we have. So, if we would have issues, crash, they can't help us.
Okay, that's, okay, because I know that when you talk about software becoming obsolete, that can mean a bunch of different things, so that's helpful. And then with respect to the price increase, so I know we did have, whether it was last year or a couple of years ago, we did a price increase to, that wasn't related to the federal price equity, it was related to just normalizing it for some of the revenue challenges we were having and getting it more in line with. Yeah, it was a couple of years ago, I think. I guess the question I'd have is, I think you said it was two seventy-eight was the number, so that's the average price purchase lunch?
No, two seventy-eight is what the federal government pays as a subsidy.
Right, so our average purchase has to be over two dollars and seventy-eight cents in order to qualify for that federal price equity. So, I guess my question slash challenge, I'd like to see a little bit more analysis on that to not necessarily just go up twenty-five cents because it feels like if I look at these numbers, I don't know what the, what the number purchases are between elementary, secondary and premium, but I could, there's math, pretty easy math that supports that we might not be that far away. And so, I don't want to just lob on twenty-five cents every year. I'd like to make sure that we're, we're making, you know, we're not.
When price equity first came along, the Department of Ed said at that point that districts would, rather than throwing, you know, a quarter every five years, would probably have to make more regular increases. Historically, it's been, not just in this community, it'd increase it by twenty-five cents and stay the same for three or four or five years, it'd increase it by another twenty-five cents. So, what they, what they probably prefer is that you go up a nickel or a dime every year, but to be honest with you, a nickel or a dime is a pain in the rear end.
Yep.
For cashiers to deal with. So, it's really easier and more efficient and you get more bang for your buck if you increase it by a round figure like a quarter. That way, you're not dealing with so much change.
Though on the flip side, aren't we having less, fewer cash transactions probably than we did if you think about the?
Yeah, I don't know that off the top of my head.
Yeah, because that's, that's the, what I saw, when you see the numbers, it makes sense, right? You want to keep them round for quarters and not having some of those, but as we move to more electronic, it feels like we don't have to necessarily go in quarter increments.
Kevin could probably talk more about that. I would bet you at the high school, there's more cash.
To answer your question in a word, yes, there's less cash transaction and more paying online now with parents, so that certainly helps. It helps speed up the process of the line going through and it helps with the cashiers with less transactions, yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, I know that if we talk about a price increase, that's something that'll come back to us later.
Yeah.
So, just as we head towards that, I'd like to just express that I'd like to see some analysis that might support something more than just the twenty-five cents across the board. And I'm all set, thank you.
So, I appreciate you looking for different options. I just wonder, what is the process for if you decided to offer an organic option? I mean, is this an all-or-nothing, organic or non-organic type of swap or would it be like a premium meal and an organic meal? Or do you, have you ever thought, have you thought that far ahead or are you still in the exploratory for how you would roll out something like that? And wouldn't that be something we will get this year in a proposal? What is the process around it?
I guess the process is with, our purchasing is looking at being able to get organic and GMO-free products in, in the price structure that we currently have to basically bring it in and not have a financial impact. So, that's number one, is can we get items in like salad dressings and things like that, spices and begin to move that. The cleaner ingredient, the better, the better for kids. So, we know that and that's what we're working towards. To be able, I think the question that came was could we go have a full organic program, GMO-free program? And I think, you know, looking at that, it would be like these other programs, seven dollars, which would probably be an issue in the community to be able to do that. And the other, the other part of that is, it isn't even something that if you offered that meal, you have to understand, even if you offered that meal, you would, in say, children were going to pay for, pay for it, you had that. You would also have to offer that to any free and reduced child that came through the line if they wanted it. You would, you would have, you couldn't distinguish between them. They would get the meal as well. So, you would incur that cost. So, there would be definite, there would definitely be an impact.
Yeah, I'm not saying that we're, I just wondered what the process was for you to determine now that you've gotten this community feedback, what the offerings are going to be?
I think what it is, is to, from our purchasing, to bring in what they can provide for us and present that to the community. Here's the dressings, here's spices, here's things, here's some of the scratch cooking that we can denote what those products are for parents. There may be where we can do a salad or something to that effect and offer that next year at a premium rate. So, really, it's an ongoing, you know, and then we would have to see, is it something that's really going to sell? Is it something that, you know, if the salad comes in, it's perishable? If we, if it doesn't sell, what happens then? Now, your cost is going to go up, so.
Okay, so your approach is to do what you can within the price.
Yeah.
Structure that we have currently.
Right.
Not to go.
Right. Unless you said, let's, if you said, "That's what we want to do as a community, we want to do this," then we would come back and say, "Okay, this is what it's going to cost, this is how it would work" and, you know.
I just wonder what your.
You'd subsidize, you know, then obviously they would, the program would need probably to be subsidized at that point.
So, I'd have one very easy question that my kids ask me to ask. What's up with the ketchup packets? And are you going to go back to the old packets that taste good? So.
That's because there's no.
There's my question.
That's the High-Fruit Coast Corn syrup, probably. Is it, really?
That's exactly it. And the syrup, they'll say the same thing about the syrup because when you get syrup in the store, there's a couple of things. If you get syrup in the store, it's different because it's, without the syrup, it's much lighter. The ketchup is the same. Some of the cereals that we have are not cereals that you can get because when you, when you see the cereals and you see like, I think it's a Cocoa Puff, you're thinking, wow, that's Cocoa Puff in the store, but we have a low sugar. We actually have it manufactured that it's different than what you can buy in the store. So, again, manufacturers, once they get on board and once they realize there's products we need, they come around and begin to produce that. And that's what happened with the cereal. They, it's low, low sugar cereals. It's different than what you can get in the.
I only hear about the ketchup. So, the ketchup is not changing?
We're working on it.
Well, you can't have it both ways.
We're working on the ketchup.
We're working on it.
I'm just going to go back and say we're working on the ketchup. Or pack them.
What school are they in?
Hopkins in the middle school.
All right.
Welcome to our life.
Do you have any special ketchups there, Kevin? I'm just going to go buy us some packets. Thank you very much. Yeah, exactly, black market.
My question was kind of similar to Kelly's in that how would we see this come as a proposal, but it sounds like there isn't going to be a proposal for a seven-dollar lunch because that would be the program. It's not a premium lunch like what we offer at the high school for three twenty-five. We can't do that. So, if we can't do that on a large scale, can we do that with products like, because it seems like it wouldn't increase labor cost, but milk or, I don't know, the mini carrots or, even if it's just the produce, right, or an apple, that a kid can buy à la carte that, so it might cost them more than the seventy-five cents or whatever the à la carte items are because they choose to buy an organic one?
That's possible. I mean, the other part of it is, it's the availability of getting organic produce in this area. Some of these, like, like I said, some of, the two, two schools we looked at were in twelve months, one's in Florida, one's in California. I mean, that is a possibility. I mean, that's something we definitely look to move, because the company, Witsen's, is looking to move in that direction, so we just need to see what makes, what makes sense and what we could do.
And that, I think you called it, maybe like, well, I thought of it as a subscription program where people had to sign up ahead of time to get those lunches, so then you can sort of deal with the waste aspect, right? Of like a perishable. If someone had to sign up ahead of time and say, "I'm buying," my kid is subscribing to an organic lunch program for the month of September. Is that, I mean, is that something that we'd contract like an outside company to do? And I, I send my kid the lunch and I'm not, I don't actually think that this is necessarily the problem of Witsen's, but if this is something that people want, is there an add-on subscription program or a company that you know of that does something like that that we can work with?
We could research that to find out if there is anyone in the area that would do that. We don't, we don't see that, to be honest with you. We, I would just, we don't see that. So, we can find out, we can. So, we can find out, we can do some more research to see. And I would also have to find out exactly what you're asking is, is to bring in a, offer a product as a reimbursable lunch, A, is it reimbursable? B, how does that fit again with the free and reduced kids? Where we're saying, "You can get it for $7, or we can get you this special one, but you're free. You're not allowed to ask for this." So I would have to see, I would have to see the regulations really to look, look at that, to see what we would, if we're able to do something like that.
I spoke to the business manager in Sausalito, California, which is the, the number, the first district in the country to go non-GMO and organic. And she said, "The $6.50 to $7.00 price is bumped up to factor in the fact that they would have to provide that same meal to kids that are on free and reduced." So effectively, you have the paying customers subsidizing the free. So you'd have to figure, figure that out.
And, and that's, that's anyone's guess. That's something you'd have trial and error to figure out how many of them would, you know, what, what cost that would be to you.
Is there any more questions? Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you very much.
Kevin is a member of the wellness committee as well in the community. He gets involved in a lot of things behind the scenes, so, kudos.
Chris Heron, that's going to be a good presentation.
Thank you.
I would recommend everybody has an opportunity to see it, to see it. Good stuff, powerful. Thank you very much.
Here we are, second quarter. Year's going by fast. We're almost at the end of the third quarter, another month or so. So, I'm here to tell you that the picture is not as, quite as positive as it was at the end of the first quarter, mostly being driven by special education. At the end of the first quarter, we were projecting a positive balance of $391,000. We're now looking at $283,000. And we, we now have five additional sped-out placements, more than we did at the end of the first quarter. So we have seven additional sped-out placements that were, then were budgeted. And the cost of those, as we pointed out at the end of the first quarter, was offset by the prepayment of sped tuitions at the end of last year. The payroll of positive variance is $351,000. Most of that is due to personnel attrition. That number includes the savings that we'll have from not filling the assistant superintendent's position until June 1st. Column change is lower than budget, you know, you saw that number at the end of the first period, first quarter. And then negotiated pay increases, we did not report that at the end of the first quarter, because the contract had not yet been settled with the HTA. So that was a positive variance, because we settled for less than we had reserved. Positions added after the budget process, and positions budgeted that's not filled are identical to what you saw at the end of the first quarter. The details follow. And then we have all other variances. That would be, for example, some teachers who went out on leaves, maternity leaves, and then they decided to stay out longer than their period of disability. So we saved some money on them, because the price of a long-term substitute is less than the daily rate for, for a teacher. So, total payroll variance is $350,000. Expense variance is a negative 130. You have the details there. Special ed again is leading the charge there. Medical and therapeutic, a lot of that has to do with new students. A lot of that has to do with students who may have been projected to be out of district who we brought back, but they still required some, some services. Professional development, we have a small negative variance, $2,000 bucks. Testing and assessment, there simply wasn't enough money budgeted in the special ed area for that. Grounds maintenance, we're going to go a little bit over budget. Building maintenance, we've had a lot of issues that we're projecting are going to cost us $52,000 more than we had budgeted. But two lines, two lines down from that, you see some savings in the extraordinary maintenance account. Extraordinary maintenance was for specific items that were identified in the budget. They either came in at lower prices, or we were able to do it ourselves. And then you have the copier maintenance, that variance was there at the end of the first quarter as well. The next couple of pages show the breakdown by state function and then by programs. I'm happy to answer any questions there. I would like to point out that in the area of the capital accounts, capital accounts, the first item on there is one that's created some conversation, has to do with the money that was kept aside from the new high school for the replication of agricultural lands. So, we did some investigation. Gene had some historical knowledge there, passed along some old emails. I reached out to Mr. Camalo and asked him for some, some guidance. And here's what he said, here's the background. "The school department did construct a building on land that was subject to an APR. The town was given the option of paying $110,000, which was $10,000 per acre, or putting an alternative 11-acre parcel under an APR. Legacy Farms agreed to do this for the town, so that we could save $110,000." At this point, everything is in order for Legacy to restrict the land. The developer is on notice that he needs to submit the required documents to M DAR, Massachusetts Department of Agricultural Resources, I believe. And...
The developer?
Yep, and so, I said, "So it seems that we're able to ask the town finance director to close out the new high school capital article at the end of the year, correct?" And he said, "Yes, as long as the APR is the only remaining issue in the project punch list." And I believe that it is. There is no timeframe for Legacy to specify the deadline by which Legacy has to fulfill that obligation. But it looks as though we're going to be able to just step away from that and no longer show that in our financial reports, which I think is a good thing.
Except, it's my understanding that there already has been a sidewalk at Legacy with the Department of Agricultural, whatever was the acronym. And the land that they were willing to set aside was deemed not acceptable. So unless they're now offering up new land...
Well, so, the developer has promised to review the documents and contact M DAR. The Legacy Farms HCA does not specify a deadline by which Legacy Farms should fulfill this obligation. So, I think in response, Mr. Dumasen, in response to annual questions from the school committee about that, that amount of money, the $74,570, we want to close the books on it in terms of any responsibility that we have. And we've been assured by the town manager that there isn't anything further that, that we need to do.
It's rare that I'll say this, but I think at this point, this is really their decision and not ours. We don't own this property. And so, if they want us to continue to hold the borrowing authority for it, if they think they're going to need to pay the $110,000 so that they only have a smaller amount to come up with independently, I feel like that's their decision.
That's what, we, we would agree.
We agree. And the only reason that it's even showing up on our books is because at that time, school was built, the, the funds were expended under the direction of the school committee. And so...
Right. And, and we came in under budget on, on the building, and so there was, that opportunity just presented itself. But I feel like at this point, the decision about whether they find land at Legacy Farms still, or they start having a conversation with the new Pratt Committee, or they decide to come up with $110,000, is really a town decision.
Yeah, it feels like, I agree with you, it's a town decision. It feels like, I don't know, regardless, it's $110,000, it's, with $110,000, if we had to come up with it, just speaking as a school committee member, but also as just a voter in town, I don't know that I'd support borrowing it. So I, I don't know why we have the, why we're leaving open the appropriation to borrow.
It doesn't make sense.
We'd have $110,000 probably somewhere in the town operating budget that would cover the money we'd have to pay. I would, I really would like to see that, based on that. I think we should have that closed out by the end of this fiscal year.
I'm happy to, to get that off my report, I really am.
Yeah, that's, I agree. It's not our decision at this point, and I don't like holding the borrowing for $110,000 as not the source that I think is responsible to do that.
It's also not our obligation, so, and this implies that it is.
I'd close it out.
You know, when I made the report, actually, I meant to say something on, on the first page, that we're at 283. Well, that, that was a week ago when I put this report together. I'm happy to tell you that we had some positive news on, on the special ed and having to do with an out-of-district placement that will save us some substantial money between, in the end of the year. It had to do with a move out of town. And so that has not been factored into this, because I became aware of it just recently. That doesn't happen very often.
See, it's a rosier picture, Ralph.
It is a rosier picture.
All the batteries and the light bulbs. Not yet.
But I think we could probably afford some. And I don't know if anybody has any questions. I know I tried to blow through this, I'll go through it quickly, assuming that you've seen it and would have developed any questions in advance, so, I thank you.
I don't have any questions.
I, I just want to thank you, Ralph, not only for the report, but specifically for the time and effort you went into investigating that, that new high school piece that, that has been kind of baffling to me, and I know it comes up every year. So, thanks for, for, you know, not only following up with it, but, but informing all of us on your results.
Thank you.
Are any of these unexpected outplacements affecting our budget for next year?
Of course.
So are we, are we revising it, affecting it?
Well, no. Some of them, it, it would depend upon the timing, Ellen, and I don't, I would have to double-check that, because I gave my first quarter report, I think, at the beginning of November. And so, after that, the FY17 budget was put together. And I believe that some of the kids went out after I gave my report, but before the budget was voted on. But I'll double-check those numbers, and at the next meeting, I'll let you know.
I think it's a great question, but it's a, and it's a question that every community grapples with, and we just, you just never know. And I think we can only, we can only plan our budget to the best of what we know that's in front of us, and then leaving ourselves some wiggle room, as long as, as well as understanding that we have circuit breaker and the ability, as we did last year, to prepay. And that's, it just reinforces why that is so important to do whenever we can, because there are unknowns, and I, I don't know a superintendent who doesn't come to our meetings and with this very same concern about the difficulties around budgeting unknown special education needs.
To assuage your concerns about next year, the student that I mentioned was over $100,000 in tuition. So, that was in the budget, yeah.
So, this is, this is a really important point to remember when the charter review committee does come and talk to us about, because a lot of this timing is driven in the charter, and there has been a request, as I shared with you before, to submit our budget two months early, or month earlier? You know, which, based on this annual conversation, is just going in the wrong direction, so...
I think that that's, that's sort of my point, that it'd be interesting to know how many, at each stage, we could be better prepared for if we could move our budget process. If we keep it where it is, if we moved it by a month, like, well, is there a point in the year where we sort of, we have it figured out, kind of, for next year?
It's a bit of a crapshoot, it really is.
It's always so fluid.
Because one of, one of the laws in Massachusetts is the April 1st law. If a student moves here before April 1st, we own that student's tuition for next year, even though it's not in our budget. If they move in after April 1st, as long as it's a private tuition, the sending town has to absorb that cost for one year.
I didn't manage that.
It is, I mean, it is, again, worth noting for those who are, who are paying attention to this, and I think one of the things that you've done on this quarterly report that, that shows that is that we are, we prepaid $256,000 in sped costs last year. So that was the budget items that we prepaid, and we are even accounting for that $7,000 in the hole on sped costs, which means we're $270-some thousand over our budgeted number.
But you didn't factor in the contracted services and sped, medical and therapeutic.
Yeah, so that, and that doesn't even encompass all of it, so, yeah, it's...
So I have one other question sort of on this vein. When I was at the tech legislative breakfast last week or the week before, I don't remember, there were several legislators there talking about pending legislation related to the foundation budget review, as well as circuit breaker, and particularly regarding medical expenses. And so, I cannot, sitting here right now, repeat to you exactly what the content of those bills are. But in the past, when there have been bills like that, have been, that have been particularly advantageous to us, the school committee has taken a position and sent a letter. Maybe we could have, I know that MAS has been really involved in drafting that legislation. Maybe we could have an agenda item at a future meeting, just to get an update on that. And if we thought it was something that we wanted to send a letter of support, you know, through our legislators, we might be inspired to do that. Because, I mean, to your point, Dr. McLeod, every district is dealing with these exact issues, and then particularly the suburban districts, the Chapter 70 formula is not, not drafted in our favor and under review, so we might want to weigh in on that.
So we have a meeting with Karen Spilka next week. Brad, so Hollison Superintendent, Ashland Superintendent, Medway, and myself. And so we are meeting with her for this very reason.
And now that we have settled the HTA contract and given you this report, at the next meeting, there will be budget transfer requests to reshuffle the deck. So you can expect to see those.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, thanks, I'll see you when I get in, thanks.
Okay, now, moving on to new business. Appointment of the assistant superintendent. There is a motion before you, there are two motions before you. So I'd seek a motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent. And so we're just repeating our vote that we took in executive session? So I'd seek a motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent to appoint Dr. Carol Kavanagh for the position of assistant superintendent subject to acceptable query, background check, and the successful completion of a mutually agreeable employment contract.
So I, I will make the motion and just add that we have the opportunity to meet with Dr. Kavanagh, and I think she's going to be a great asset to the district, or I think so anyway. I think everybody does, in, in filling this position and really can move us forward. So I'm, I'm very excited to make this motion.
Ms. Bergman?
Yes.
Mr. Graziano?
Yes.
Yes.
And I'm a yes, and Ms. Nickerson is absent. So carries. Second motion is to authorize the superintendent to enter into negotiations and execute a contract with Dr. Carol Kavanagh based upon parameters provided by the school committee.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Graziano, second by Ms. Knight, Ms. Bergman?
Yes.
Mr. Graziano?
Yes.
Ms. Knight?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Ms. Nickerson's absent. Next item is Happening Center for the Arts. And for consideration is the review of the permitting request by the Happening Center for the Arts. We had, I guess, a mini presentation by them during public comment, and we were able to ask questions. We don't have a predetermined motion on the agenda, but we do have a request and a draft of a letter which we would seek the approval of the school committee to submit.
Or the amendment, I have it up here, and I can edit if you, if you like.
So, can I?
Go ahead.
So... So I should read the letter first. So this is effectively a, wouldn't describe it as a support letter, but a, we don't find it detrimental to the educational activities, and we've expressed some specific concerns.
Correct.
I think that's right, and the only other portion of this in the last paragraph is that there's a notice requirement in the MGL with respect to the number of days, and we did not receive adequate notice under that provision, and they asked us to waive the time, the notice time.
Which may invalidate sort of what my stance on this was, if that's something that we need to do, I guess we don't need to do it, but we should do. Because I, the conversation with Ms. Grill and Mr. Joseph was helpful, and I'm sure your conversation with them was even more detailed than the one we had, and it's clear that you feel like the parameters aren't detrimental to the educational activities of the school. I guess I just wonder if, I'm not sure we should be taking any action.
So, I mean, I think that's interesting. I think as a butters, that's why we've been asked, so we're not asked to take action on whether or not we think they're eligible for a permit.
Right.
We're asked, I think, as in a butter, whether or not there's a concern that we have that should prevent them from seeking a permit from the Board of Selectmen, and that's their, in their purview, to grant or not grant a permit.
So.
But I, I mean, to your point, I don't think they're required to get a letter from every single butter.
Right, it's a bit of a negative consent option, right? It's, if we don't. And that's where I sort of feel as if we're not, while this letter is worded effectively in my mind to not be a letter of support for it, which is not in any way as a body our place to support or to support it, but I also don't think, as a member of the committee, that would be something that I'd even be in favor of, but that's where I just, I come back to, I'm struggling, this might be viewed as a letter of support, albeit tacit, and that's where I wonder if we do not have any significant enough concerns to say to the Board of Selectmen, we believe this would be detrimental to the educational activities. I could be swayed from this, but my feeling is that we'd be better off not sending a letter than.
Yeah, so I'll just read to you, if I may, the notice, which is what resulted in Ellen and I feeling that we needed to say something, and the notice basically indicates, based on the five hundred feet, that there is a public school located within a radius of five hundred feet. It states that if it objects to the issuance of the requested license, it must submit a written objection to the Board of Selectmen prior to the scheduled hearing on March first. I do object, I mean, my feeling was that there were concerns, sufficient concerns around that abutting, I should say, shared parking area that they addressed tonight in terms of that we would have the first say, and we would be notified, but I have concerns about insufficient lighting, I have concerns about kids walking across parking lots when there are events taking place with people exiting the premises, and so I don't know if that's an objection or not.
So then.
I understand, I hear what you're saying.
Well, so that shifts my opinion, and that is that, but it shifts my opinion also on, I think, the content of the current draft of the letter.
Okay.
Because what you're expressing to me here is a more, I think is a more, is a stronger concern than I think comes across.
Okay.
And that would be my concern, because if we didn't, if we didn't have any, not to minimize this, but if we didn't have any concerns about the educational activities, but felt like there were some things we could do to improve the lighting around the parking lot.
They could do.
That's somewhat what comes across in here. What you're saying to, what I'm hearing you say is that we have real concerns about this as a, as a concept because of students walking through the parking lot when events are going on, in the insufficient lighting creating a real problem. So I.
What I struggled with, John, was this phrase, the HCA premises as defined are not detrimental to the educational activities of the school.
Straight from that MCL.
It does.
I was just reading it, too, I was like, it's a pre-existing building, you're not going to change the premises.
Well, and that's, that's what I'm, what we're struggling with here, because they're asking us to weigh in on if we have any objections to the issuance of the license. They're also saying to us in the meeting that we had that it would be helpful, we don't have to include this phrase, but it would be helpful if we would be willing to insofar as it's not detrimental to the educational activities. So I'm looking at those a little bit separately because I don't see a direct causal relationship between the educational activities and the premises.
So, well, I don't want to necessarily, although I'm not sure what choice we have in terms of making adjustments to, wordsmithing the letter.
Oh, we can, I have it right up here.
But I almost wonder if, the initial statement is that it's not detrimental to the educational, and then that you've shared your concerns regarding these, and I would almost feel like we need to headline the concerns more than headline the, that the premises are not defined. I don't know if it's flipping the order of those paragraphs, so the superintendent, and if we're going to sign it, I would say the superintendent and the school committee have concerns regarding student safety, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, and then while, you know, while this is the case, the school committee does find that the HCA premises are defined are not detrimental to the educational.
Or if those concerns are all addressed.
Yeah.
Because the lighting isn't in their proposal, right? You said they had to amend it?
Yeah. I just, I feel like that's going to get across what you're expressing more strongly to the Board of Selectmen.
All right, so should we maybe not take a formal vote, but get a, get a temperature on, do we object, or do we not object as a school committee to the permit? No, no one wants to.
I think, yeah.
Do our concerns, as articulated in this letter, and maybe now the patio, or any other concerns, do they rise to the level for anybody here to be an objection? Or are they just concerned that we want to make the town aware of, or do we feel like it's not our place? I mean, I think those are sort of the three options. Either we are, we formally object, we write a letter to share concerns, just because we don't want them to go, I guess, unstated, but it's not a formal objection, or we don't write anything. Those are, right? Those are the three options.
I like the concerns approach, because it's the Board of Selectmen that's going to be issuing this, and they're the ones that can put conditions on approval, so they can formalize the concerns into conditions, and we'd kind of be offering up conditions, if you will, in our letter, like, suggested. They could be interpreted as suggested. Like, I would like something in there around, we're going to clear everything with the school district before we schedule any events. I don't want it to be like, we scheduled an event, oh, well, that's the night of the Chris Herring talk, and we're using all of the parking spots. Oh, sorry, we can't cancel, it's an event, you know? I like that being in there as a concern, that we get first dibs at all the parking, and they work around us.
Kelly, I think that's a great point, because to her, she explained tonight, Kelly did that, everything is planned a year in advance, they use our calendar a year in advance. Well, the Chris Herring presentation wasn't, wasn't on there. I mean, we've had plenty of notice, but as I was listening to her, and I was hearing some of your questions about events taking place simultaneously, I thought it would be helpful to us to even know that. It would be helpful to know which licensed activities are taking place on which nights.
To your point of where is our jurisdiction versus, it's just tricky.
Because some of these concerns, I mean, some of these concerns, quite frankly, if you talk about them in terms of sharing the parking lot and lighting, et cetera, they're not necessarily germane to the liquor license.
Well, the permission to drink outside, I mean.
No, I'm saying the concerns that are listed in here. I mean, I think they're, they are amplified potentially by the consumption of alcohol, but, I mean, these are sort of more, you know, the right of first refusal piece on the parking lot, or the, you know, that's, that's a, whether or not they serve an alcohol, if they have an event the same night as the Chris Herring event, that's.
No, my safety concerns were established, were specifically related to people drinking and getting back into their cars.
So I think we do need to make that, I think it's important to make that differentiation here.
It was definitely related to the alcohol, yes. Because until this, this, there has already been an established agreement about the parking, and when tonight they said there could be an event with up to three hundred people, well, that's going to take much more than that small little space that is in the agreement. I don't think the agreement includes anything more than that, that the student, the senior parking.
Is it all of senior law?
It's all of senior law. It is.
So, but I mean, I think to the point that Kelly's raising, that seems more germane to the shared parking agreement as far as having to check with us before they schedule anything, even, you know, even though they've got our year calendar, every time they want to schedule an event, they need, I mean, I feel like that's not a liquor license conversation, that's a shared parking lot, you know, facilities use essentially conversation. I don't disagree with it, I just don't.
I just think that alcohol is going to drive the use, and it's going to drive the size of the events that they're hosting, as is the new space that they've just moved into.
Yeah, but it's also entirely likely that they'll have other events that will be large that won't have alcohol, like, for example, a play, that would be relevant to what you're saying as well. So, I mean, I get that it's sort of prompted by this new request, but it makes me think that possibly we need to also take another look at our shared use parking agreement with them and have a.
Yeah.
A more enlightened conversation now than we had then, just because it's.
We do need to open that, that agreement, because it has evolved and things have changed, and we did talk about that, too. I think, you know, Ellen, to your point, we're being asked as a butters, particularly given that it is a school, if we have concerns about the liquor license, but we're not being asked to make a decision, right? We're just being asked to weigh in, to bring to light any concerns on the part of the schools that might not have been considered.
Well, and primarily the hours impacted by the liquor license are not per se school hours, that doesn't mean there isn't a school event, but it's not, you know, it's not opening a bar next to a school during its school day, at least. I mean, in that case, clearly, we would need to take a very strong position, and then, but it sort of gets to be.
Yeah, to your point, that's exactly what I said to them when I first read this.
Right.
And it said that, you know, the all alcohol beverages, Monday through Thursday, five to eleven, that's exactly how I expressed it. I said, it sounds like there's a bar opening up across the street. But when they agreed to redefine, and really agreed that that was a very valid point, that's not what we intend, gave me examples like, you know, there could be an event during which intermission, during which a very small window of thirty, twenty minutes, they would open the bar, and then it would be closed again. So within that three-hour event of a window, the actual serving of alcohol may only happen for twenty minutes. And I said, well, that, that changes it, it sounds very different, and could you define that? And they were, as you heard tonight, very willing to do that. I think it could even be more specific, because you asked the example of could there be something in the upstairs space that's happening while there are classes downstairs? Maybe there's a limitation around that, and serving of alcohol during that time. I don't know how specific the school committee wants to make.
It's their educational program, so I don't know how, that's not our educational program.
It has a lot of our kids at it, though. It's all the same kids.
But they're, but, you know.
Is it?
That's their business, that's their.
But I mean, right, and they're signed up on a weekend, you know, do they also go to our school? Yes, do they all go to our school? No, you know, that's where it's very, that seems like a parental decision.
They know there's a ton of classes over there, and they're going to overlap at some point.
The challenge, the challenge in what we talked about here, especially, too, is while, this is not to say I don't in any way trust what we heard from them tonight and what you heard from them in the meeting, is that now, with the changes that they're willing to make, we're now being asked to respond to a document.
That we haven't seen.
That we don't have.
Right.
And so if they went ahead and made those changes, are they actually going to be sufficient to allay our concerns? And we have no way of knowing that until we see said document. So I wonder if that's, if those concerns, where we talk about the hours and the specificity, adding more specificity to the, the actual serving provisions would be worthwhile to put in the letter, too. To the, Ellen, to the question that you asked earlier, I would, I would fall in line with Kelly on, I'm not, I don't, I don't, I personally don't feel like it's a formal objection that we need to make. I do feel like we, that providing concerns and that would hopefully move towards parameters of agreement that they'd be held to.
Because the Board of Selectmen are going to have a meeting, and this is going to be input.
Well, but so, that meeting is also our joint budget meeting night, so we are going to be there. So they're going to ask us whether we have written this letter or not, so I mean, I think it's to our benefit to, to, you know, put things coherently down on a piece of paper that we can work from.
I think, I think our chair has a.
I revise.
I feel like we could revise for hours.
So, to whom it may concern, start with the receiving of legal notice, the last paragraph, basically saying that we waive if we all agree to waive the nonconformity of notice. Then, the superintendent and school committee have shared concerns regarding student safety, and in particular insufficient lighting in the shared parking area, the volume and timing of events, the physical area where alcohol may be present, i.e. outside versus inside, the, I think then we added the specificity.
Really the lack of specificity.
The lack of specificity of the hours for permit, and the lack, and the lack of specificity for the hours of permit with the directors of the HCA. Improving lighting in the parking area, limiting the location of alcohol consumption, and the timing of events, requiring notice and/or coordination with the school department before scheduling events, and adding specificity to the hours for permit would address these concerns relative to a liquor license in an establishment abutting school property.
I like it.
Can you say it again?
I almost have the whole thing, but I am not going to be able to read that.
There's a lot going on. Okay.
So I got the first paragraph.
You got the first paragraph?
And I've got this, the superintendent and the school committee have concerns regarding.
Have shared. So we've shared our concerns.
Shared their concerns.
Shared their concerns regarding student safety.
Student safety, yeah.
And in particular.
In particular.
Insufficient lighting in the shared parking area on school property.
Yeah, comma.
Comma. The volume and timing of events.
Comma.
Comma. The physical area where alcohol may be present, open parentheses, i.e. outside versus inside, closed parentheses, comma.
I just said open parentheses.
Okay, i.e. outside versus inside.
Outside.
Closed parentheses, comma, and the lack of specificity.
Lack.
Lack of specificity.
Are the hours for permit.
Yep, for permit.
Period.
No, with the directors of the HCA. It's already in there, right?
Wait, can we back up? Not the hours for permit, the hours of serving, because the hours for permit are quite specific.
Okay, the hours for serving.
Yeah, so what they're saying is the hours for permit that are listed there don't actually match the hours for serving.
Okay, sorry.
For serving, with the directors of the HCA.
Mm-hmm.
Improving the lighting in this area.
I would just say improving the lighting, comma, limiting, you know, so we can get rid of one phrase, limiting the location of alcohol consumption.
It's getting redundant, should you say, addressing these concerns?
I think this is illegal.
Oh.
I don't know, I can't see it anymore, so, limiting the location of alcohol consumption, comma, the timing of events, and requiring notice and/or coordination with the school department before scheduling events.
Requiring notice, sorry, and/or?
And/or coordination with the school department before scheduling events, comma, and adding specificity to the hours for serving.
And scheduling.
Yep. Yep.
Events. I already had that written. Oh, I did. I had it down here. Hang on. Events. And adding specificity to hours.
For serving.
For serving.
And now you have it would address, I'd say these, get rid of safety, these concerns relative to a liquor license on whatever, the rest.
Concerns. You have to say it again.
It's, oh, you deleted it?
Sorry.
Concerns relative to a liquor license in an establishment, a budding school property, period.
Okay, got it.
And then I would add that last sentence, which was originally your first. The school committee finds that the premises as defined are not detrimental to the educational activities.
And then is it signed by you and I?
Sure. Does anyone else want to look at it again?
No, let's just get this thing, should we make a motion?
Oh, yeah, yeah, well, I mean, yeah, but I think she was just talking about like editing it. Is she getting rid of our signatures, right?
And this is the right language? The premises as defined are not detrimental? It's not?
That was the language they sent me.
Okay. Because I was expecting there to be something about the liquor license in the sentence.
No, it was exactly that, that sentence.
Okay, so, would anyone like to make a motion to authorize the school committee chair to sign the letter to the Board of Selectmen? Yep, the school committee chair and the superintendent to sign the presently drafted letter to the Board of Selectmen.
So move.
Great. Motion by Mr. Graziano, second by Ms. Knight. All those in favor?
Yes.
unanimous and so carries.
I'll send it to you for one more look before.
Yep, sure.
Just let me know if you want a title or a square.
No, no, no. Okay, good. Moving on to the student handbook. For our consideration is the request and recommendation of the superintendent to approve the high school and middle school student handbooks that have been amended to be consistent with MGL Chapter seventy-six, Section one A and one B. There's a recommended motion before you. Are there any comments or questions on the motion? I seek a motion to approve the high school and middle school student handbooks that have been amended to be consistent with MGL Chapter seventy-six, Sections one A and one B.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Knight, second by Mr. Graziano. All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes, unanimous and so carries. Next we have school committee policy IHAMB and IHAMB dash E one, sex education policies for our first reading. For our request and recommendation is, I'm sorry, for consideration is the request and recommendation of the superintendent to amend this policy to reflect the current practice. Does anyone have any comments or questions on the recommendation or the recommended motion before you?
I know you mentioned one of the emails was related to a book, but the other one I thought was related to the policy.
So I think we, um, one was, yeah, one is not really policy related. It was asking for information, I think, because this was on our, on our calendar and our agenda. Someone thought, oh, they
Surprise only generated two emails.
They deal with sexual education. Can I have the title of the book? And the other specifically was asking for
Modified curriculum.
A modified curriculum for our special learners. And so Dr. McLeod was going to speak to that, but I don't, I don't know if it causes a revision in the policy, but in any event.
It doesn't. I could start with that to, to, through your question, and then I'll give you a little bit of background. So the question is related to providing accommodation for special education students around the curriculum. And that is something that we do across the curriculum in all areas. The parent is specifically asking that there be sufficient notice as well to not only, I guess she had requested that this, this modification take place and it, it took December, several months before it happened and, and
This certainly wasn't timely in terms of her being able to understand how the curriculum was going to be modified to meet the needs of her, of her daughter.
And so what I had replied to, to Ellen was that this is absolutely something that we need to take on, but not through policy. It wouldn't be something that we would tie to policy because it's a curriculum modification, but it is something that I will take up with the special education department around this particular. I know this is an area of great concern, sex education. And I know that this is something that has come up as well with, with CPAC. So I will definitely follow up on this. And I actually have a meeting tomorrow morning with the sped chairs, so.
Thank you.
The other piece I wanted to, what this ended up, the reason it came up as a policy amendment was that it wasn't consistent with, the policy as written was not consistent with our practices, specifically around notification. The way we have been providing notification varies by building. In some cases, it's in the handbook. I think at the high school, it's in the handbook and parents sign off on that. At the elementary school, the notification takes place just before the, that particular unit. And the principals feel that that is a much better way of notifying parents rather than having it randomly in a handbook that you are expected to read at the beginning of the year. And how can you possibly remember that, oh, yes, this is going to take place in April? So I just wanted the policy to be consistent with the practices and that, that's the main change. The other thing that I am suggesting that we delete is this, this piece about
Dissatisfact.
It, it's, it's the dissatisfaction after the process and that they can take it to the superintendent. Parents can do that with anything. I don't know why it's called out in this policy more than any other. So I just didn't feel that that particular paragraph was relevant.
We in fact have a policy on that process.
Okay.
Well, that's what I was going to say.
It's the school concerns, yeah.
You could cross-reference that, but
We could, we can also cross-reference that in everybody.
Right, yeah, so. My only question is just because I think the policy went out today or yesterday.
Yesterday.
I didn't see the emails, but it sounded like there were several. I don't know if there's time sensitivity and it's worth waiting till the next meeting just to see if we are getting more emails. I don't think, I think the change is really just reflecting.
The only thing we changed was notification.
I don't object to doing it tonight.
And I do apologize that it didn't go out sooner. That was certainly an oversight from my office. I think that when we don't do policy every single time, it ends up, because it's new practice, it ends up not, not remembering to do it. So thank you for letting me know that it hadn't gone out. If it were something more substantial, but I just feel that given that it really is just to be consistent with notification, it's up to you, obviously.
I, I think, I, so I, I think in this case, I'm, I would be comfortable approving it despite that because even the feedback that we've gotten, as we noted, wasn't actually specifically related to the policy. So we may continue to get emails on the topic because it may have just brought the topic to front of mind for some parents. But if we waited a week, it doesn't seem like it's that urgent, but it does also seem like the changes are pretty innocuous, so I wouldn't mind knocking it out tonight.
I mean, we need to have some more business at some of these meetings.
The only, I mean, the only I don't think that any of the changes are problematic and I'm completely comfortable with all of them. The only, my only hesitation is that, given that we have said that the policy is open, somebody may have a different substantive change that we have not considered, that they might want to ask about. And two days is just a short turnaround to do that.
Sure.
So if there's not time sensitivity, we could, we could just
There is not.
That's a good point. I'd be comfortable rolling it over.
So we'll bring it back for a second reading on March tenth.
And we have old business for March tenth.
And then we'll have old business because we're so efficient.
Next is the lease agreement with the Boston Athletic Association and the Twenty-six Point Two Foundation. For consideration is the request and recommendation of the superintendent to accept the renewed lease agreement between the Hopkien Public Schools and the Boston Athletic Association and the Twenty-six Point Two Foundation. There is a recommended motion before you. Any comments or questions on the motion?
I had some questions about the revisions.
Okay.
Not really anything substantive, but there were some areas where I thought we could put a little bit more specificity that might just be helpful because this is such a long-term agreement. So although I actually had a question in, in A, in the fourth paragraph, it's saying the fee component related to custodial services and the facilities related cost or services will be paid through funds received by the town consistent with past practices. Is that, is that a reference to marathon fund money that comes? So that seems separate from our agreement. Right? Like we, that's money that goes to the town that gets used for separate purposes. What we're dealing with here is essentially the thirty-five thousand dollars.
So you're looking at the draft and there have been a couple of, where are you looking exactly?
I'm looking in the fourth paragraph under A.
About the, the fees. Yes, that comes from somewhere else. That's above and beyond the thirty-three thousand. Is that, I'm sorry, the school committee also agrees with the fee component? Is that where you are?
Yep.
Yeah.
So they want that in this agreement and they're asking actually for, I think this is what the addendum relates to.
Okay.
And so, so a couple of things. One, and maybe, maybe this wasn't your understanding and maybe I had it wrong, but I did check with the minute taker. That I, I think this, we did go through it and we signed it. I signed it on behalf of the school committee because I believe that at our meeting, we authorized me to negotiate and sign it. But in any event, there is an addendum that the BAA and the Twenty-six Point Two Found, actually the BAA, not Tim Kelde for the Twenty-six Point Two Foundation, is looking to deal with that addresses these, I think it's the fees and the custodial service and how the money goes through the town because they feel like it's not clear. And they, although it's separate from the twenty-five thousand that does come to us, their feeling is we're, they say they deal with it in every single town that they, I guess, give money to.
They do on the route, yep.
Run through. But they really want clarity on it and there was no way it was coming out of here and they actually want an additional agreement around it.
Okay, so this part isn't really about our particular agreement, but it's in there because it's important to them.
Because it's very, it's very important to them.
That's right.
There's going to be additional detail that they're proposing to Dr. McLeod that we haven't agreed to.
So if you, if you've already signed this, then
I know, well, I'm, I so, no, what I'd like to know is changes, if it's small, if it's, if it's edits that are, I think, are significant, then we can consider going back to them and just saying, hey, we're making these.
Okay, anyway, because of the amendment. Oh, addendum, so we don't.
But yeah, yeah, but we are going back anyway.
And I realize too, I skipped over, in this first section called recitals, it makes reference to our community use, our, our facility use policy. And it lists several amendments or revisions to that policy. It doesn't list all of them. So I don't really know, A, why any are necessarily listed because whatever is the particular date, there's going to be one that is in force, that is on our website. So I don't really, but if we're going to list them, then we should list all of them.
So your point is that it should be a policy titled.
So my point is either two thousand one, three, and five come out or you add in nine, twelve, and whatever other ones there were.
Yep.
Then, so the date of the agreement isn't filled in, but I assume since you've signed it, there's a date now under C. Now I'm skipping ahead.
Yep.
Yes, it's, it's filled in as February twenty-second.
Okay. And then so my question on Section D. Availability is subject to availability of such facilities as determined by the school committee.
So that's, that paragraph's been revised. I don't know why. So I don't, that's what I, when I asked if it was in the packet, I meant the, this one. I didn't think it was because we did it so late, but anyway.
Shall I read it?
Yep.
The school committee agrees to make certain school athletic facilities available to the BAA upon request at no additional charge for its youth and American athlete development programs periodically during this agreement. This includes at a minimum access to the facilities agreed upon by the superintendent or designee at least five days prior to the date of the event in any given year. The BAA shall make such requests at least sixty days in advance. Such availability shall not be unreasonably withheld. So that was the, for this year, the understanding is, as I explained it to you, we wanted, the, the five days gave them more flexibility, but as, as Ellen had described, we wanted to make it, we didn't want to make it so specific that it could tie the hands of a future superintendent or, or changes that might happen.
But we also took out the school committee because no one appears to come to us.
Exactly. So that was my first question, although hearing now and, and when you referred to it earlier about the five days, the only thing that, that jumps out at me is that if they are now setting up on Friday during the day and Thursday night, or Wednesday and Thursday, whatever it was, all those students are not going out for gym class or practice, they're traveling back and forth across that property from the schools. Okay, so quarries aren't an issue. That was where I was going with that. Okay.
They have to require police detail as they did last year.
That's excellent. And so then my only other suggestion is because, you know, the, the individuals involved and historically involved in this may be changing in the future. If we could add somewhere in here the approximate date by which the fees would be paid, I think that would be helpful just for any future finance directors to have it on their radar screen to be expecting it or any future BAA people to know, oh, you know, it's due in March.
It would be helpful. We talked about this actually and I asked Ralph as a follow-up when we typically get it. And I, and I think it would be, you know, given just different people move on and change and we want to make sure that someone's expecting the money.
Right. Because it's a lot of money. We do good things with it. So those were my only requests.
Well, I was listening to you on whether or not that could go in the addendum, but I think the addendum is to specifically deal with the other types of fees that apparently the BAA pays, like every town.
Where would you think to put that, Jean?
So I think, well, payments and notices, I think it goes in H and we would just say payment should be made by the BA, BA, and, you know, before shall be made payable to, shall be made
By.
Made by
Yeah, no later than X.
On or before.
Right, that's good.
Whatever date, we'll have to check with, I don't, I don't know when they normally make it, but on or before X date and, and should be made payable to.
End of the first week of June or something?
This year, right? Because this is the year where we didn't.
We did.
Did we get it?
We got, we came back and it was more than we expected.
I just, okay, the way I know that we get paid is usually Tim comes with a big check, which I don't remember him, like a big fake one.
No, it was combined.
Okay, and so
Because the, the payments for the bleachers had already been met, so we got a combined thirty-five thousand.
And I can't remember if I'm usually wearing my coat during that meeting.
You are, yeah, yeah.
If it's a warmer weather meeting. Anyway, so that's why I just thought if we could put the date in there, that'd be helpful.
That's a great idea. And so I'll follow up with Ralph on suggested there.
Okay, and then we'll just reach our sum and say we made these edits.
Do you still have the motion now or do you want to roll it over until the edits are done?
We can roll it over until the edits are.
Well, maybe it would be helpful for us to see the addendum and then we'll just do it all at one time.
Yeah, I don't, I don't plan on negotiating the, I mean, because it's not even something that we've done before. So I think the addendum will come through long before, I mean, after this one gets signed, if that makes sense.
Are we not weighing in on the addendum?
No, I think we are. I'm just saying it's not, it's not something.
You don't want to wait for it.
What? I don't want to wait for it to get this.
I don't think you'll have to. I think we can get both in for the next meeting.
Okay.
It's just, Tim's ready. He just has been out straight, so I'll just chase him a little bit.
Great.
Okay, thank you. I sent you that edited version, so, okay.
I'm just trying to find mine.
Once you have a chance, I will.
Okay, next, Capital Project Article Warrant Number sixteen dash oh four three in the amount of five hundred twenty-nine dollars and sixty-six cents. For consideration is the request and recommendation of the superintendent for payment of invoices for Capital Project as appropriated in Article twenty-four. There's a motion before you. Are there any comments or questions on the motion? It's a motion to approve the payment of warrant number sixteen dash oh four three in the amount of five hundred twenty-nine dollars and sixty-six cents to the vendor as outlined in the warrant.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Burkmann, second by Mr. Graziano. All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
We have no old business. We have an opportunity for public comment. So we'll move on to items by consensus. Dr. McLeod.
The superintendent recommends a school committee vote to approve the operating budget and other funds warrant number sixteen dash zero zero in the amount of three hundred eighty-eight thousand, eight hundred forty-four dollars, eighty cents. The superintendent recommends a school committee vote to approve the high school student activities warrant number sixteen dash zero four two in the amount of twenty-one thousand, seven hundred eighty dollars and thirty-five cents. The superintendent recommends a school committee vote to approve one hundred and twenty-one dollars from the HPTA Spiritware and six hundred ninety-seven dollars, ninety cents from General Mills Box Tops for Education fundraisers be placed in the center's school gift account. be placed in the center school gift account as indicated in the agenda materials. The superintendent recommends a school committee vote to approve two thousand eighty-two dollars and eighty-one cents from General Mills Box Tops for Education and one hundred and twelve dollars from the HPTA Spiritware fundraisers to be placed in the Elmwood School Gift Account as indicated in the agenda materials. The superintendent recommends a school committee vote to accept a gift in the amount of five hundred dollars from the Hopkinton Running Club to be placed in the Elmwood School Gift Account for the Marathon Fitness Program as indicated in the agenda materials. The superintendent recommends a school committee vote to approve two thousand, one hundred twenty-two dollars and forty cents from Target's Take Charge of Education fundraiser to be placed in the high school gift account as indicated in the agenda materials. The superintendent recommends a school committee vote to accept a gift in the amount of two thousand five hundred dollars from EMC to be placed in the high school gift account for high school robotics as indicated in the agenda materials. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Burchman, second by Mr. Graziano. All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes, unanimous and so carries. Our next meeting is Thursday, March tenth at seven P M. Here in the middle school library, I'm sorry. Our next meeting is the joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen on March first at Town Hall. And then after that, our next school committee meeting, um, that's here in the middle school library, will be March tenth. I thought it was just with the apartment heads. Right now, we're March, we're March first and March tenth. Now I'd seek a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Burchman, second by Mr. Graziano. All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes, unanimous and so carries. We're adjourned at eight thirty, nine thirty.
It's like crazy.